Now, we'll start with our first presenter this evening. We also have three other panelists, two other, yeah, three other panelists. Our first presenter this evening is Dr. Gina Collier. Dr. Collier is a board-certified internal medicine physician, author, educator. She is the vice president of Health Equity and Community Investment for Excelis Blue Shield, Blue Cross, and she organizes events in her community. She is out of Rochester, New York. Dr. Collier, welcome.
Can you see my, my slides? Okay, excellent, thank you. Excellent, thank you. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about a COVID, give you a little bit of a COVID update. It's been a very, very long two years, and I think it's a good time to figure out a little bit about where we've been, and where we are, and hopefully where we're going. So, just to recap, I always think it's worthwhile to take stock of where we've been and some of the costs that we've experienced during this pandemic. As you know, African-Americans and Latinx populations had a significantly greater impact from COVID. And, you know, I think it's important that we are mindful that the case rates for Black non-Hispanic populations were 43% higher than non-white, than non-Hispanic whites, and 73% higher for Hispanic populations. And I won't read the slides for you, but I think the important information here is to understand that as we move forward from the pandemic, that those populations are dealing with the sequelae from a disproportionate impact of the pandemic, and we need to be mindful of that. We also need to remember that Black and Latinx populations were more likely to die from COVID, two times more likely early on in the pandemic. And I think that that's important because, again, we have to be mindful that while there's a lot of excitement coming out of the pandemic, that there's some people that are still dealing with significant losses as we move forward. In terms of years of life lost, it is also important to remember that for the general population overall, there's about one year of life that has been lost. But for Black populations, they have been about 2.7 years of life lost. Again, a significant consequence. So, we oftentimes think about pregnancy, and we've gotten a lot of questions about pregnant women in COVID-19. The sum of it all is that from January 2020 to about March 2022, we've had about 180, almost 188,000 cases and about 293 deaths, 293 too many, that were impacted and lost from COVID. So, where are we now? I think one of the things that's important to note is that when we look now at March 22, we find that the curve has definitely started to come down. And so, we see our peaks throughout the entire course of the pandemic, and now what we're seeing is that the numbers have fallen, and hopefully, I hope, they will stay down. But things are headed in the right direction. So, we've seen cases. What are we seeing? We talk about variants. Right now, the predominant variant is still Omicron, and there are three of those that we're looking at, variants of concern. We have the BA2, which seems to be on the rise. We have B1.1529, which is a smaller amount than the prevalent one, which is BA1.1. What we have learned, however, about the variants is that they do change. And while things seem to have stabilized, we also have to remember that at any point in time, there could be the emergence of a new variant. And so, we have to keep a watchful eye on things. Earlier on, if you recall, we talked about the Delta variant, and that's depicted here in the yellow. And I think this does a nice job of showing how the variants change over time. So what about this BA2? So, Omicron, BA2. Originally, there was some concern in lab data in Japan that this variant might cause more severe disease than BA1. However, in the real world, we're finding that there really isn't any significant difference in severity. And so, while you can get reinfected with BA2 even after you've had BA1, this is very rare. It may be a little bit more transmissible, but that said, we're not necessarily seeing a significant increase in hospitalizations resulting to that. So that's good news. What about in our communities? What are we doing now? Right now, we're shifting from community transmission to really looking at levels of COVID-19 in, in the community. And, and this is a shift because what we're doing now is looking at determining the higher of the new admissions and inpatient bed metrics to determine what recommendations are going to be put forth for, for communities. So when we talk about the COVID-19 community level, what we're talking about is an actual formula, where you're first going to determine, you know, whether a county, a state, or a territory has less than 200 cases per 100,000 people in the last week, or 200 new cases or more per 100,000 people in the last seven days. And then, you're going to go ahead and determine if the level is low, medium, or high for new admissions and inpatient beds, and use those as indicators. And so, I'll show you a little bit of what that looks like. So, it's back to the green, yellow, red. And so, what you see here is there are classifications based on fewer than 200 or more than 200 new COVID cases in the past seven days. And then, after that, what you would do is then you would look to see first, okay, if it's fewer than 200, how many new COVID-19 admissions per 100,000 population in the last seven days? And then, if it's less than 10, low, 10 to 19, medium, greater than 20, high, so on and so forth. And you can actually look at this on the CDC's website. They are able to give you up-to-date information should anything change. I went ahead and took a look at Broome County because I think it's always important to have some relevance. And this is as of March 10th, and Broome County was medium. And so, you know, you can go on the website, and you can look, and you can see locally what's going on in your area. What's your COVID-19 community level? And that's really important because it helps you determine what you need to do. So in this case, for medium, you would say, okay, if I'm at high risk for severe illness, I need to wear a mask, I need to take precautions, and definitely, you know, talk to my healthcare provider if I'm at high risk. I need to make sure I'm up to date on my vaccines. And if I have symptoms, I would want to get tested for that. However, you also need to be able to maintain vigilance. If you're in a high-risk area, that's the red. So, when you're in a high-risk area, let's say you go to the site and it says it's red, you're going to want to wear a mask indoors in a public space. And for everyone, we recommend that you get your COVID-19 vaccine. Again, get tested, and if you at high risk, you're going to want to make sure that you take precautions. Low, what we're finding is that, you know, you have the liberties of not necessarily needing to wear a mask, but still needing to stay vigilant. What we find here when we're talking about vaccinations and boosters, because it's critical, I'm telling you, make sure you get a vaccine, but we've gone now past just getting the vaccine. We're talking to people about getting boosters. But I thought it'd be interesting to take a look at where we are with boosters. What we're finding when we look at populations is that if you take a look at this chart, it shows you of people in blue. Those are the people who are eligible to receive a booster. And you see that in most places, what we're finding, in the non-Hispanic population, 50.8% have gotten their, their boosters when eligible. In the white population, non-Hispanic, 54% have gotten their boosters when eligible. But in the Black non-Hispanic populations, it's a little bit lower, 43.7%. American Indian populations, 45.2%. So, we really need to push those efforts to make sure that people who are eligible for boosters are able to ask the questions that they need to ask and get the information that they need to feel comfortable to get these boosters. Because in some populations, once people are eligible, they are not proceeding to get their boosters. I'll talk to you about the colors, the green, and the yellow, and the orange. And this is as of March 10th. This is our map of the United States. And if you take a look in our state of New York, you see, for the most part, we're in that low green color. We have some areas that are in yellow, and I had shown you Broome County. And then, we have a few areas that are still high. But overall, the trend is moving towards low, and my hope is, without the emergence of new variants, that we, we're headed in the right direction for the spring and the summer. When we look at vaccination across the states, what we find is that we are doing pretty well in New York. We're at 75.7%. Puerto Rico had the highest number of fully vaccinated people. And then, you know, you get down to some of the other states, Louisiana, Wyoming, you find that they don't have as high level of, of vacs, fully vaccinated people. Why does this matter? Because when we actually look at the data, what we found is when people were unvaccinated, they had a greater risk of death, right? 41 times the risk of dying from COVID-19, as opposed to the dotted blue line, which the fully vaccinated person without a booster, still a little bit higher than a fully vaccinated person with a booster. But I think the data is striking, and it really does give you a good depiction of the value of not only being fully vaccinated, but the value of being fully vaccinated and receiving a booster. When we look at cases, the same thing. We see here that unvaccinated people, when we had the spike, greater number of cases than the people who were fully vaccinated without a booster, and the people who were fully vaccinated with a booster. So those are very important concepts to, to come away with, that boosters do confer value. So, what about vaccines, right? So, everyone over the age of five should get a COVID vaccine if they're able to. Ages five and above, Pfizer's authorized. Ages 18 and above, Moderna, Pfizer, Johnson &amp; Johnson. And everyone 12 and over should receive a third dose of the vaccine five months after their second dose. And vaccines can be mixed and matched, at least at this time, but the preferences for Pfizer or Moderna. And there are a lot of innovative work being done, and I think that you're going to see a huge transformation in the field of COVID-19 over the next year. So, when we talk about who is fully vaccinated, I showed you a little bit about how many people were fully vaccinated in America. What did they get? What are they vaccinated with? And we see that the majority of people are vaccinated with the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine, followed by Moderna, and then Johnson &amp; Johnson. So, oftentimes, we talk about the myths. In many communities, people are always, you know, worried about getting the vaccine. And one of the things I thought it would be helpful to mention is, you know, what, what's the science say, right? And some people say, well, vaccines were developed too quickly. Well, the reality is that vaccines have been based on science and have been decades in the making. And it is because of the years of work that had been done as a foundation that we were able to rapidly create the vaccines. Some people worry that vaccines will alter your DNA. And the answer is no. mRNA and DNA are completely different, and these vaccines do not alter your, your DNA. However, I think it is important that people ask those questions because it is confusing when you're talking about things at this level, mRNA and DNA, and how they're related to each other. There's also some confusion about if you've had COVID-19, you don't need to get vaccinated. While I think that the slides that I showed earlier show clearly that you really do need to not only get vaccinated, but getting boosted is also important, and we have the data to prove that. Some people worry that vaccines use a live version of the coronavirus, and this is not true. There's no live version of the coronavirus in the vaccines. And of course... Finally, people worry about COVID vaccine not affecting children. And I think we've seen that child hospitalizations rose significantly when we did have the surge. And so, it is critical that we get children boosted and vaccinated when possible. And I believe that's... It? Well, maybe not. Maybe not. Not sure what's going on here, but... Okay, so I did want to talk to you quickly. I'm hearing it echo. Are you all here?
No.
Okay. Post-COVID-19 symptoms, some of the things that I think is important to acknowledge is that people who've had COVID, they suffer some post-COVID symptoms, long COVID symptoms is, is how we refer to it. And I think that if you've had COVID, and you don't feel as though you've returned to your baseline and feel the way you did before you have COVID, it's important that you talk to your clinical team because there are actually a lot of other people who are reporting prolonged symptoms after having had COVID. So be mindful that it's not necessarily all in your head, that there may be real symptomatology there that they can help you with. And there are actually centers of excellence developing around the country to focus on this. I talked to you about the various need for vaccines, and remember, you have many choices. Five months after you've had your primary series, please consider getting a vaccine. And the one thing that I get asked a lot of question about, questions about, especially with pregnancy, is what is the effect of the vaccines or COVID on, on pregnancy? And what I can tell you is that having COVID is an independent risk factor for severe COVID-19 disease. So, you know, we highly recommend that pregnant people, pregnant women, get vaccinated because it does reduce severe illness. And we do see that having COVID in pregnancy increased risk of premature births, increased risk of C-sections. So that's something to be mindful of. And that is the end, and I thank you for inviting me.
Dr. Gina, thank you for that very in-depth presentation. I'm sure there are some people with questions, and if you have questions, please make sure you jot your questions down in the chat, and we will do our best to entertain those questions this evening. Tonight, we also have panelists with us from Broome County area. And I'm going to ask each panelist as they present to, we have, tonight, they're going to share information about the areas that they work in as it is related to COVID on, on this evening. We have Chelsea Romney Nedlich.
Riom Nedlich.
Riom Nedlich. I'm, if I slaughter the name, please forgive me. Forgive me. Melissa Brenna also, and Margaret Heath. And Chelsea is from the Broome County Health Department. She's a educator, community educator. Melissa Brenna is a family nurse practitioner, and Margaret is a registered nurse from UHS, and she works in mental health. So, I'm going to ask, starting from my, everybody's on my left. Starting with, with Chelsea, share with us where you are, what you're doing as it relates to COVID, COVID-19.
Thank you for having me. My name's Chelsea Riom Nedlich. I am a public health educator with Broome County Health Department. So, I spend a lot of time educating people about the COVID-19 vaccine. That includes healthcare providers, the general public. So we go out to healthcare providers' offices to talk to them about how to recommend the vaccine to their patients. We speak to people in the general public who have questions about the vaccine, who are looking for a little bit more information. I also, if you are from Broome County, you may have seen our Broome County COVID-19 dashboard. I have been the mastermind behind that dashboard for the last two years. I update that every day with the latest COVID data. So I'm quite in tune with that as well.
And all you have to do to get to the COVID dashboard is Google "Broome County COVID Dashboard," and it will come up. It's very easy.
Right, right, you're right.
So these ladies are working in concert.
It's you. I know, I know who did it.
These ladies are working in concert with one another. So, Chelsea, you, you work in the community, and if they have questions, they can either Google "Broome County Dashboard." If they have questions that they want to talk to someone, what do they do?
So if folks have questions about the COVID vaccine, and, you know, they just really want to talk through those questions with someone, they can call our Broome County Health Department, 778-2839, and let us know that they would like to speak to someone about the COVID vaccine, and they can be transferred to myself or one of our other nurses who's available at that time.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Melissa?
Okay. I've been in this community for 41 years, been a nurse for 48, and also a nurse practitioner. I started working with the Health Department back in March of 2020, when our medical director, Chris Ryan, called me and said, I had worked at the Health Department for 14 years before, and he said, "Any chance you can help us with case investigation and contact tracing?" And I was, I was still, I hadn't retired at that point, and I said, "On weekends and evenings, yes." So, pretty much, weekends, days after holidays, some of the holidays, talked with people who had tested positive for COVID. And as much as possible, tried to give them information in terms of what to expect, what to do. People had questions about getting retested and so forth. Then, the Health Department moved into vaccines, and we started out at SUNY Broome, at the ICE Center, which was wonderful. It was a wonderful experience, actually. And operated that for several months. That's a, that was a good time for us. We, we gave a lot of vaccines, and people were very appreciative. I've also worked in, and we, we continue to do vaccines. I made some notes. We, as I said, started at SUNY Broome. We've been in almost all of the schools in the county, both public and private. We've been at, last summer, we were at the Broome County Fair and the Lumberjack Festival. We went to a lot of the summer festivals, National Night Out, Family Fun Day at Ross Park Zoo, a number of places, Trucks on the Track. I mean, we were kind of trying to be everywhere. And, you know, Windsor at the Firehouse, and, and so forth. We also go to workplaces and vaccinate. We've had employers, and we put it out there. If you have 10 people, we'll come to you.
Okay.
And so, we have done a large number of people through their employment. We also, as I said, we've, you know, been in the schools. We even, a couple of us even went to a large dairy farm in the northern part of the county and vaccinated 18 people there. Many of them, most of them were people on work visas from other countries. We've, we go to food pantries, the Salvation Army, housing for the elderly. We also do vaccines for the homebound. If anyone is interested in, either for themselves or a family, household member, and the person is homebound, we will go to the house and administer the vaccines. Ray Serewick from Office of Emergency Services and myself have done a number of those, and we will continue to do them. As far as testing goes, Broome County had the mobile testing tent for several months. The, the demand went down for a while. We took the tent down, and then we stood it up again last fall. Our testing tent, however, was a casualty to our huge windstorm a couple of weeks ago, so that is no longer operating. But people can come to the Health Department, the front desk, and we are giving away, for at no charge, home COVID testing kits.
All right.
And so, that's been very popular.
All right. Thank you.
And we distributed a huge number of testing kits to the schools. We also, for a while, did, we had a school-based, home, a school-based testing program, where if a child was sent to the nurse's office because he or she had symptoms and was sent home, and the parent had, a parent or guardian had difficulty in, you know, getting to a testing site or whatever, for months, we went to people's homes and tested not only the child who was sent home, but also anybody else in the, in the household who wanted to be tested.
So, Melissa, it is, I, I think it's, it's great that we have all of the resources available. You've been out in the community for the last two years. Contact tracing, what's the importance of contact tracing?
Well, actually, we're, we're not doing that anymore.
Okay.
We, we stopped doing contact tracing. A lot of people, you know, about the same time that people had opportunities for home testing.
Okay.
You can go on our Broome County Health Department website if you do a home test and it's positive, and you wish to report it. You can do your own documentation of that. But really, home testing has put a lot of agency in people's own hands, okay? They can, they don't have to go off to a testing site someplace else. They can do it at home. People are really very knowledgeable about what they should do. They should stay home, isolate as much as possible from other household members as much as possible. And their affidavit of infection is acceptable to their employers as well, so...
All right. And it's great that the testing, again, there, the test kits are free and available at the Health Department in, in Broome County.
Right. I'm Front Street in, in Binghamton, yes.
Awesome.
Go, go to the door, say I'd like some COVID testing kits, and we'll hand them to you.
All right. Will, will they also, if they needed help for instructions on how to use those kits?
Yes, we can, we can certainly do that. However, it's a, it's a very easy, there's a complete pictorial procedure in the, and it's really very simple.
Okay.
You swab your own nose, five times around each nostril, five times around, and then you, you take that and dip it in a solution, and, you know, just, I put it around the, the side of the container, and in... And in, uh, 15 minutes, you have a, uh, a result.
All right. Thank you.
Melissa, I was in Rite Aid, um, a couple of days ago and they had a whole bunch of testing kits right at the cash register.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. And I said, "Well, is this free?" And I was told, "Yes, um, your insurance will pay for it."
Uh huh. Yes, yes.
And she goes, "Oh, you want a couple?" I go, "I go, 'Yeah, sure.'" She says, "Take as many as you want." I go, "Oh."
Very good.
Of course, took and gave them to people.
Yes, yes.
Interesting. I had no idea.
Segue into Margaret. Margaret, uh, Heath is with us. Margaret works as a registered nurse for, uh, UHS.
UHS. And yes, so I've been working in psychiatry, uh, for, I would say, almost, um, 16 years. But, um, if you know anything about nurses, uh, we pretty much are jack-of-all-trades in healthcare. We pretty much have our hands in just about any, just about anything. We have pretty much worked in a number of areas. So I work, um, primarily as an intake nurse and, uh, in psychiatry, like I said before. And, uh, in the ECT area, which is in the electroconvulsive therapy area. Uh, and what this means is that, um, patients do not get treated, they cannot get treated until they go by me. So in other words, they have to be fit to go under anesthesia, uh, before, you know, they can proceed with their treatment. So this means that, um, because of what I do, I am up close and personal with patients. Okay? You're putting patients under anesthesia, you cannot put a mask over their face, right? So we're all up close and personal. And if one of us gets sick, we all go down because then everybody's exposed, including doctors, anesthesiologists, nurses, we're all exposed. So, um, when COVID, uh, hit, when things, uh, started getting really bad, we had to come up with a process real quick as to how we were going to take, continue to serve our mental health patients in Broom County. Okay? Mental health is as important as medical health and should be treated equally, just as much. Okay? That's the way it should be. Not always is, but that is how it should be. So we had to come up with a process wherein we were gonna keep ourselves safe because we can't afford to get sick. I mean, people did get sick because we didn't have a vaccine yet. And, uh, also keep our patients safe. So, and, uh, I am gonna tell you this right now, it was something. We had to cut the number of patients we were treating, for one, to start with, because, you know, you have to feel, how are we gonna, uh, space patients? And at this point, we do know that five feet apart means nothing, right, Melissa? We learned, you know, along the way, as we went along and things evolved, and we learned through whatever research we were doing, that, mm, five feet doesn't mean a whole lot of anything, you know? Anyways, um, one of the things, and I don't have numbers right now to give you, but, uh, people, you know, or had, there's mental illness going on. So we have, uh, uh, people are already depressed, anxious, suffering from, uh, paranoia, any type of mental illness. You can talk about, you name it, we, we deal with it, we, we, uh, do our best to take care of it and help people so they can actually, uh, go run their lives in a normal way. So, and then you throw in COVID on top of it, right? So now we have people who were already depressed, uh, they can't see their therapist because therapists have to stay safe, everybody has to stay safe. Now we have to figure out Zoom, you know, Zoom, um, admission, uh, you talk to people on Zoom. Who, who wants to do that? You know? And, uh, so in addition to that, you have people who are depressed, they became more depressed. Uh, they become more anxious, uh, people became sicker. And, and if you watch the news, then you know, you know what happened. People who had, um, um, addiction problems, that kicked up a notch also. Cause, uh, you know, people weren't taking their meds, uh, they weren't seeing therapists. Uh, they were cut off from their support system, family, friends. So everything just went worse. Everything went sideways. So we can't afford to shut down. We had to figure out how we're gonna treat people to keep them safe. So every, um, age group of, of people who had any type of issues with mental illness, everybody got worse. Everybody got sicker. Uh, suicide rates went up. Uh, it was, it was just bad. Okay? So, um, once we figured out our system, uh, of course, things started improving. We were able to kind of start bringing more patients back in. We went from treating 20-some patients, uh, three days a week to, we were down to like five, 10 at one time. So what happens to all those other people who needed treatment, you know? So we had to figure that part of it out. So, um, and I'll just, uh, say a little bit more about this. Once we had vaccines, this is what we had to deal with. Now we have to deal with social media, who are telling people, people who are already paranoid and, you know, uh, not very trust, trusting, of, you know, people around them. Now they're, you know, they're getting messages, uh, vaccines are going to change your brain. It's, it has, um, uh, uh, electronic devices in the vaccine that's gonna be implanted in, you know, under your skin. And people are gonna be able to figure out where you are, what you're doing, read your thoughts. You know, it's, it's gonna, um, cause other illnesses, it's gonna cause other diseases. And I'm sure you've all heard, you know, some of these, the wild stories that went on. So it was tough job trying to debunk these things. And I still have patients who, you know, who are still not getting any vaccine. So we, we had to come up with a system and, and I'll just quickly say, at this point, as of today, um, it came down from medicine that we can now, we were testing people every three days before they come before us. As of today, we can now stretch it back out to five days. We were, uh, testing five days in the beginning, then we go, "Oh no, that's not enough. We gotta move it up a little more." So we went from five to three, so now we're going back to five. Yeah. So, you know, um, it's, 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 um, it was something. But thank goodness, uh, the numbers, like Dr. Kyle said, the numbers are moving in the right direction. And, and I think I can speak for my, my colleagues up here, um, that, uh, we have to live our lives, but we still have to remain, live with some, a level of caution, still, okay? Because, um, if you look at the news, things are kind of happening in, uh, in Asia again. So, all right, so.
And starting in, in Europe.
And starting on in New York again. So we can't, um, be too comfortable. Live your life, but be cautious. Yes.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Margaret. Thank you, ladies. If you have questions, uh, we want to know what questions you have for our panelists and as well as Dr. Gina, if she's still on with us. You can type your questions into the chat and we will definitely address those questions that you may have. So, um, Dr. Gina was on, Dr. Gina, you spoke about the, uh, differences in the rates of people getting vaccinated. What do you think is the biggest difference between those getting vaccinated and those refusing to get vaccinated?
I think the people who aren't vaccinated, well, there's several, I think, causes. You have some people who never got the vaccine because they just don't believe in the value of the vaccine. There are a lot of people who have believed a lot of the misinformation, um, that, that has been out there. And, you know, I think there are some people who are fearful of having some type of a adverse effect from the vaccine. And, and I think that's why it's so important that we talk to people to really understand what is it that is keeping them from getting the vaccine and trying to answer their questions and trying to show them the data that, that will help to address their concerns. Because unfortunately, it is very, very difficult at this time to be able to discern truth from fiction. Uh, because there are a lot of people who have a lot of credentials, so to speak. And, uh, you know, uh, we just need to rely on those trusted people in the communities, people that people know, will give them sound advice. And this is why I encourage people to, um, not to belittle people who don't wanna get a vaccine, but more so to engage them and really help them get what they need so that they can get vaccinated and/or boosted.
Is this, you spoke of the BA, the BA2, the new, uh, variant. And it sounds like, uh, every month, there's, uh, a variant of the, uh, COVID-19. So when we talk about variants, where do they come from?
So variants are mutations. So you have changes in the way the, the virus is structured. And mutations happen all the time. But some mutations, some changes in the makeup of the virus can make it more transmissible from person to person. Um, it can make it more deadly, you know? Um, and so it really does depend on what changes have happened. And we've watched changes as we've moved from Delta to Omicron. And we're going to continue to see, um, mutations and variants emerge because we don't have control of the virus all over the world. And so the longer you have persistence of the, the virus, you, the more likely it is you're gonna have new variants. The question is whether or not the variant that develops is going to cause greater burden of disease or lesser burden of disease. Will it be like a cold or a co, common cold? Or will it be something that causes, you know, um, greater severity of illness and death? And that's why we have to be vigilant and watch. And that's why we can't just, you know, say, "Oh, the pandemic is over, the levels are low." Because we, it's a very small world we live in right now. We're one plane ride away from, you know, um, another significant surge. And so, you know, I tell people, "Keep an eye on those dashboards, keep an eye on what's going on. Make sure if you're walking into an environment where you don't know the people in the room and it's crowded and the ventilation is poor, put a mask on." You can never go wrong putting a mask on. Um, however, you know, keep an eye, be vigilant. Um, and, and I think that that is sound advice for everyone.
So we're in Broom County, uh, and Broom County is in, uh, the, uh, not low, but medium, um, for, uh, Omicron. When people, uh, are going around, what is the advice that will help people navigate in this medium area for the virus?
I can answer that. Uh, what the CDC recommends for a community that's in, uh, its medium COVID classification level is, um, always, no matter what the situation is, high, medium, low, get vaccinated for COVID if you're able to and get tested if you're feeling unwell. For folks in the medium area, um, a mask is not necessarily, um, required in all public indoor settings. But it is recommended for people who have an underlying condition that might make them more, uh, vulnerable to serious illness. Like, you know, folks with other chronic diseases, um, you know, immunocompromised individuals, older folks, pregnant individuals. These are all folks who might want to speak to their healthcare provider and, you know, discuss the benefits of wearing a mask and then go on to wear one in public indoor settings within that medium designation.
All right. As Dr. Kyle said, you can't go wrong wearing a mask.
And I, oh, sorry.
What I usually tell my patients, I say, "Okay, uh, if you go grocery shopping on Thursday, around there, the stores are usually, you know, more people in the stores on Thursdays and Fridays and Saturdays. Put your mask on. You'll drive into the parking lot and you see the parking lot is filled with cars." I would highly suggest you put your mask on before you step into the store. You can, I mean, you can, you take it off as soon as you get out, but I would put my mask on. And that's pretty much, I tell them to do what I actually do for myself and my family. That's what I do. I said, "This is what I do."
And, um, on the topic of masking and recommendations, as I'm sure everyone is aware, New York State has rolled back its statewide mask mandate for public settings. That does still stand for select few settings. That would be healthcare settings, uh, long-term care, correctional facilities, public transit. You're still required to wear a mask in those places. But most places like shops, businesses, schools, um, there's not a state mandate in place that requires you to wear a mask there. Now, businesses can choose to adopt their own rules and require patrons to wear a mask while on their premises. So it's not a bad idea to continue wearing or bringing your mask along with you in case you run into a location such as that. If a place does have their own masking rules, um, you know, they're well within their rights to do that. And they're doing it for the safety of not only you, but their staff. You know, they may be short-staffed and if one of their staff gets COVID, you know, they may unfortunately have to close their doors. We saw it many times during the pandemic. So it's for the safety of everyone who walks through that door.
And that's pretty much how I approach it when I am, uh, trying to encourage a patient to, uh, uh, start the vaccine series. You know, I go, "Just think about the fact that you are actually, not only are you protecting yourself, but you're protecting the people around you. You may have a elderly relative. Uh, you know, you never know who you're gonna be around, who is going to need to be protected. So, you know, get the vaccine and practice empathy. You try not to be judgmental when you're trying to encourage people to do the vaccine. You may have judgment in your head, but do not express it. Uh, we're human, we're human, but do not express it. You know, approach with some empathy.
Well, it was mentioned before that we need to talk to people about their fears, their concerns.
Right, yeah.
I've had a number of people say, uh, you know, "My friend had a horrible reaction. I'm not going to get it." And, or people say, you know, "I, I was, I ached and I had a fever for a, a day or so." And I always say to them, you know, "When I got my first shot or, or whatever, or my second shot, and I'm not going to get another one because of that." And I try to explain to them, as uncomfortable as that was for you or your friend or whatever, what it means is your immune system's kicked in. It's recognized this, um, mRNA vaccine or Janssen vaccine as a foreigner. And it's going to react against it. And so as uncomfortable as it was, or is, or could be, uh, overall, it's a, it's a good thing. But it's, it's absolutely true that you have to talk to people about what their, what their issues are. You can't just say, you know, "You're, you know, you're stupid if you don't get it." I mean, that gets, that gets you nowhere.
All right. No, it doesn't, it doesn't.
The old saying goes, "You catch more flies with honey than flies."
We, we have a couple of questions, uh, from our audience.
So we have actually a comment and a question.
Okay.
Um, the comments from our panelist, Nurse Annie Depoe, um, who is letting everyone know that UHS has offered a high-risk, uh, COVID vaccine clinic, clinic for individuals who have high allergic histories and/or who are elevated, at an elevated risk for an adverse reaction to a vaccine dose. Um, they've partnered with a allergist in the community to make sure these vaccines are safe. And to date have either vaccinated or boosted over 225 individuals. And that's from Nurse Annie in chat.
Okay, yes.
And then I have a question, actually. I got COVID over December, as did a few of my family and friends. And a common experience was that we would test, um, after we believed we could have, we had exposure. And then a day or two later, we test again and it would be positive. Um, is there a certain amount of time one should wait before testing at home? Or has that changed over the course? Or has that changed over the course?
That's a, that's an excellent question. Um, basically, uh, you need, you, you can test at any time, you know, and with the availability of, of home tests. But basically, it's about a three-day period.
Mm-hmm.
Um, days three to five are the highest, uh, for, uh, developing symptoms or without symptoms. That's the other situation here. We have, you know, many asymptomatic people, uh, for you to have enough, uh, virus in your nose to, to be picked up by the test.
Be detectable, yeah.
Yes, I mean, there, you know, I've talked to many people who've said, I tested Thursday morning and it was negative. And, but when I tested again, I felt worse on Friday. I tested again on Friday and it was positive. Um, you know, that's the thing with the test is you've got to have enough of that virus, um, for it to be, to be picked up.
Picked up.
Another question that, may I just continue, um, about testing? And this is very confusing for people. I just had someone, uh, say to me yesterday, as a matter of fact, I've heard that if you test positive for COVID, you'll always test positive. And, no, that's not true. But there are two kinds of tests. The home tests, um, and the tests that we were, uh, doing in the tent and, and so forth, are, uh, rapid tests and they test for the antigen, which means it's looking for the protein coat of the virus, okay? The other test, which has to be sent out to a lab. Uh, so if you go get your nose swabbed and they take that specimen and send it off to a lab, that's fairly likely to be what's called a PCR test. Stands for polymerase, chain reaction, whatever. That one is picking up the RNA of the virus. Now, I explain it to people in the sense that when, like, we've all watched crime shows and, you know, the, the police or whoever collect specimens for DNA. So they can find out that Melissa Brennan, yes, actually drank out of that glass in this restaurant. She was here, okay? But Melissa Brennan has left that restaurant. But I've left evidence that I was there. And that's what this virus does for at least three months. Is it, you, that evidence can be picked up. This virus does not have DNA, it has RNA.
Okay.
But that RNA can be picked up for at least three months.
Oh.
Uh, when I was doing case investigations initially, I very quickly got onto the idea, you've got to tell people about testing. Because a lot of people, once they got out of their isolation be, because of their infection, would run out and get tested again. And they'd get a PCR test in most cases. And I, a number of them would call me back and say, you know, you told me after 14 days or 10 days or whatever we were, uh, at at that point, uh, that I, I wasn't contagious anymore and tested positive again. And so I made a point of every person I talked to with contact tracing to tell them about the testing.
Okay.
Now, if you've had COVID, but down the road, five, six months later, or, or, you know, uh, you, and you want to know if you are, uh, infected, you get an antigen test. The antigen test says, yes, right now, you are infected. The PCR test could be picking up past infection while you're not contagious, while you're not contagious. So that's, uh, uh, an important point that people don't understand about the testing as well.
Uh, for my patients who, um, you know, have become infected and of course we can treat them, uh, the facilities usually let us know. Um, they cannot come, you know, come back. They have to have three, uh, not, two negative tests three days apart.
Mm-hmm.
Three days apart before, which has to say negative.
But those would be antigen tests.
These would be antigen tests.
Antigen tests, yes.
Yeah.
So, um, did Annie or Dr. Gina have, uh, comments that they'd like to share on, uh, the testing? All right, uh, thank you. And that, I think that's really important to know the difference between the testing and it can be a little scary to get, um, a PCR test and still get the information that you are still, uh, positive when in fact you are, uh, you're, what that test does is notify you that you're still a carrier and the traces of the, uh, virus are still with you. And, and that's important.
Well, you're not a carrier, you're not. Um, you know, that's, you're not contagious, you're not carrying the virus. The virus itself has left your body, but it left its evidence.
It left, yeah.
You are not contagious.
Okay.
Left a marker.
Yes, it's just a marker that you have been infected, yes.
Awesome, awesome. One of the challenges, and this is why I think, this is why I wanted to have this available, is, uh, the, uh, lack of, of people in, uh, communities of color uh, not getting their vaccines or not following up and getting the boosters that, uh, that's required. How can we, how can we help individuals, uh, encourage them, uh, to get the vaccine and/or follow up with their booster shots?
Well, I think one, uh, factor is to work with trusted members of their community. That is absolutely essential. We're sitting here in a church. It may be their pastor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it may be, you know, their, their Sunday school teacher or whoever. But, uh, that is, that's really the key, is that, um, you know, there, there is, uh, among, uh, the black population particularly, a distrust and well-founded of the medical system. There's no question about that. But that's why it's so important to involve their, uh, their, their trusted sources.
We have, uh, seen the impact of, uh, COVID on, uh, our lives socially. Uh, Margaret, you work in the area of mental health. Um, and it has been a stressful time for us all in the last two years. Uh, what is it that we can do as individuals to work on, uh, de-stress and deal with the mental health aspect of, of this, um, virus?
Well, I am, I, you know, I'm a storyteller and I'm gonna, uh, use myself. Um, when, uh, we were like in the, the deep, dark days of COVID, UHS offered a furlough, okay? Uh, for, you know, and I was among the people who actually took the furlough for various reasons. There were nurses, uh, there who could not afford to step out of the workplace, right? And, um, fortunately, I am blessed that I can do that, okay? It's my job, that's what I do. But, you know, people, there are people there, um, I mean, husbands were laid off. You know, they're the, you know, now, uh, this nurse is now the main provider in, in this family. That's stressful enough with, with school-aged kids who now are on Zoom and, you know, that whole thing that went down. Thank goodness they're back in school. So, um, it was terrifying. And, um, I'm a, I'm, I'm a big fan of diet and exercise and that whole business. I wore out two pairs of sneakers, two pairs of sneakers. I mean, smooth, the bottom was smooth, walking and running in my neighborhood, okay? And not on, not only because I needed the exercise, but to, uh, uh, keep me from going, uh, over into the other side. I've become one of my patients. No, right. And, um, it, I probably stayed out probably less than a month when I was told, you better get back in here. Pretty much, because things were so, so bad, you know? So pretty much I say, um, if, uh, it's, if you're not used to like exercising and on a frequent basis, take a walk. We live in an area where we have, uh, lots of places where you can walk. Uh, we have to deal with winter, but, uh, uh, put your mask on and go to the mall and walk. And now you can do it without a mask, okay? Uh, so walking, uh, keeping in touch with the people who care about you and the people who you can trust, people who you can, you will allow yourself to be vulnerable with. You know, the person who will not judge you, who you say, I am terrified, I am frightened, I am, I don't want to take that vaccine because it's going to do this or that or the other to me. But people who, you know, uh, will not judge you for how you feel about this whole business. But the, and, uh, you know, watch your diet. I know, you know, you, when you're anxious, you're going to reach for that doughnut. Yeah, but all, you'll reach for that doughnut or whatever. And, um, that's not going to help. And here's one of the things that I noticed in my neighborhood. Uh, while walking around my neighborhood, that first, uh, let's see, first couple of months there of COVID, I had never seen so many wine bottles in the recyclable bins on the curb. I'm like, oh my goodness, I should write about this. But just about, I mean, like walking along the curb, all the recyclable bins were filled with wine bottles. And I'm going like, oh my goodness, look at that. And then I go, okay, I, I suppose, uh, it's, it's not a way to cope, but I understood, you know? So that's not the thing you want to do. Find a walking partner. Put one foot before the other and keep moving. It will help clear your head and you just concentrate on getting from point A to point B. Uh, music, if you love, uh, and you don't have to love music, uh, develop a taste for it. Any type of music that you like, whether it is what we call headbanger, uh, whatever music you like, whether it's classical or jazz or whatever, you know? I walk with headphones on because it keeps me going from point A to point B, okay? Uh, so I listen to, I'm an eclectic listener. My choice of music is classical music, but I, I will listen to anything as long as it, you know, it keeps me going. So that's another thing you can do. But it's a time when we were all so isolated from each other. Get on the phone, FaceTime, whatever you need to do. You know, just so you're in connection with people. People need people.
Amen.
We're social creatures. If we don't, if we are not connected to each other, if we don't, we don't have people, we will literally dry up and die, pretty much. A plant needs watering, it needs feeding. And that's pretty much, we feed ourselves by being in connection with each other. And when we don't have that, and COVID did that to us.
So, so we need attention.
We need attention, yes. We need attention. We need somebody to say, you, you're okay, you're going to be okay.
All right.
You know?
All right.
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Gina or, or Annie, do you have any closing comments about, um, related to the mental health piece, uh, that you could share with our, uh, guest?
Yes, uh, I, I, you know, it's interesting because I think one of the most important things coming out of this pandemic that I always try to stress is that it is not a return to life the way it was before the pandemic came. There is the need to validate the losses that people have experienced throughout the last two years. Whether it be loss of a career, loss of a business, loss of a family member. Some people even experienced loss of their identity without being able to do the things that they had always done. They started to question, well, who am I if I don't do this thing? Who am I if I'm not in these places or these spaces, participating in these activities? And so really, you have to stop and allow yourself to grieve the things that are no more, whether it be people, places, or things. And then come to a place accepting that this is a new season, that this is not the same old way. And allow yourself to experience, you know, those emotions resultant to those changes. Because while there are many people out there who are raring to go and ready, you know, for things to open up, not everybody's in that place. A lot of things will open up with empty chairs, right? With people that can't participate anymore. And we have to be mindful that if we came through this thing unscathed, that is not necessarily the lived experience for every single person that we're encountering. So we have to have grace for other people. We have to have grace for ourselves. And we have to be mindful that a lot has happened in the last two years. And also be mindful that a lot can still happen in the days and weeks and months to come. So it is a very fluid situation and we can't grow weary of dealing with whatever reality is coming our way. And so I think that that is a very important thing to walk away into tomorrow with, is that mindfulness, that we have to take account of everything that we've been through.
Thank you. Did Annie? So I, 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 I heard that, um, Dr. Gina, and what hit me was giving ourselves, uh, space and time to grieve. Um, and I don't think, and I don't think any of us have come through this unscathed. Uh, we may not have had the virus, we may not have been sick. Even in that, we've had loss. Uh, and it is giving ourselves time to, uh, take stock of that loss uh, and, and grieve the loss. Um, what comes to mind is from grief to grace. Uh, and after we have taken stock, given ourselves time to grieve, working with, uh, our, um, community, those in our family, and being grateful for where we are even now. Uh, and I think that is also important. I want to thank our panelists for, for being here, um, and being with us and sharing your wealth of knowledge this evening. Uh, as well, we have, uh, Annie Depew, who is a, a nurse for UHS online, and Dr. Gina Collier, who stepped in for, uh, Dr. Lisa Harris, who was not able to be with us this evening. Uh, thank you very much. And thank you, you, uh, Inwell United Methodist Church and Pastor Mark for opening your doors to us this evening and allowing us this opportunity to talk about something that is still serious uh, and is still impacting and affecting our lives. Uh, for viewers and those who are online, uh, if you know people who still have questions, uh, about this, uh, we can definitely, you've heard, go to the Broom County, uh, Health Department, uh, the dashboard, uh, just right in, uh, that, uh, Broom County Dashboard. And you will get, uh, information on what's happening in Broom County. Uh, we're going to try to, uh, host this again on the 22nd, which is next week, Tuesday, uh, for those who missed it tonight and hopefully can take advantage of being here next week. Thank you very much, thank you.
I just want to say this, and, uh, you can also access the CDC website. Lots of good, you know, extensive information there also. If you want to look at national numbers or, you know, you know, and more in-depth information about the vaccines, uh, you can access that website. Anything that says dot gov and has to do with COVID is usually pretty safe, right, doctor? Yes.
All right. Thank you very much and good night to everyone. Thank you.